Welcome, everyone, to Dobbs Ferry Annual Reorganization and Regular Meeting for Tuesday, January 14, 2020. Let's start by doing the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now, we will start with the swearing-in of me first, the mayor. So...
(Laughter)
(Inaudible)
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 So, I've been the mayor for a month so far, and it's going very well. So, let's hope you have the next 23 months going well. I just want to thank my family that's here, my friends, my daughter Gabrielle, my other two brothers are elsewhere, so they can't be here. Joy is here, I can thank Joy as well. Everybody else, Board of Trustees, Charlene, Liz, Laura Lee, Jeff, thank you all, and let's hope we have a productive term. So, thank you very much, and let's move along into the swearing-in of trustee Nell.
(Inaudible)
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 Thanks, Mary. Thanks to my mother Jason for supporting this, and Abby, and daughter, and Ray, who's at home, probably watching on TV, and always taking care of him, and thanks for everybody else for your support, and let's do this.
(Inaudible)
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 For me? I need an oath?
No.
You do?
No.
I do?
No.
No, I don't think I do.
Just appointment. I think I'm just on appointment, don't I?
Well, you're appointing her.
Come on down, Don.
(Inaudible)
He's the mayor.
Come on down.
Yeah, the mayor, I gotta hear what you say.
(Inaudible)
So, I am appointing Don Casal as Deputy Mayor of the Village of Dobbs Ferry. So, Donna, raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, to carry out the duties of Deputy Mayor of the Village of Dobbs Ferry to the best of your ability?
I do.
Congratulations.
(Inaudible)
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 So, trustee DeRozzi is not here. Stephen...
She was sworn in.
She is, yes. She was sworn in, so she has fulfilled the responsibilities, and she is the trustee, and we'll do another ceremony at another time. I guess for item number seven, let's move... God bless you. Let's move that down a little bit, I guess, and see if he does appear. Item number eight, I'd like to consider a motion to appoint the law firm of McCarthy and Finger, LLP, as attorney for the village for a term of one year, subject to the terms of the previously executed agreement. Is there a motion? Trustee Nell, second. Trustee Taylor, all in favor? That's done. I'd like to consider a motion to appoint Charlene Delacato as Budget Officer to run concurrent with her position of Village Administrator. Is there a motion? Trustee Nell, second. Deputy Mayor Casal, all in favor? According to this, I'm supposed to give Charlene the oath of office as the Budget Officer. So, Charlene, you want to come on down?
Come on down.
(Laughter)
Do you solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, to carry out the duties of Budget Officer of the Village of Dobbs Ferry to the best of your ability?
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
(Inaudible)
Do I have 40 more to go?
(Laughter)
I'd like to consider a motion to appoint Robert Harwood as Acting Village Justice for a term of one year. Do I have a motion? Deputy Mayor Casal, is there a second? Trustee Taylor, all in favor? That's done. I'd like to take a motion to appoint Bonnie Fisher as Vehicle and Traffic Prosecutor for a term of one year. Is there a motion? Trustee Nell, second. Deputy Mayor Casal, all in favor? I'd like to take a motion to appoint Dr. Richard Borkow as Village Historian for a term of one year. Trustee Nell, second. Deputy Mayor Casal, all in favor? I'd like to consider a motion to appoint Lisa Sherman as Greenberg Liaison for a term of one year. Is there a motion? Trustee Nell, second. Deputy Mayor Casal, all in favor? I'd like to take a motion to appoint Dr. Richard Borkow as Village Historian for a term of one year. Trustee Nell, second. Deputy Mayor Casal, all in favor? I'd like to consider a motion to appoint Lisa Sherman as Greenberg Liaison for a term of one year. Is there a motion?
Take one for her.
Trustee Taylor, second. Trustee Nell, all in favor? Consider a motion to appoint Don Mara as CD/BG Representative for a term of one year. Don is here. Don is going to be... The next three items, I think, you are getting some appointments. So, is there a motion? Deputy Mayor Casal, is there a second? Trustee Taylor, all in favor? Consider a motion to appoint Don Mara as Children's Village Representative for a term of one year. Is there a motion? Trustee Nell, second. Deputy Mayor Casal, all in favor? I'd consider a motion to appoint Don Mara, again, as the St. Christopher School Representative for a term of one year. Is there a motion? Trustee Taylor, second. Trustee Nell, all in favor? So, thank you for that, Don. You've got a lot of responsibility coming up for the next year, huh? Consider a motion to appoint Michael Patino as Chairman, and Dipty Shaw and Brandon Morrison as regular members of the Architectural and Historic Review Board, each for a term of three years. Is there a motion? Trustee Taylor, second. Deputy Mayor Casal, all in favor? This is exciting stuff so far, right?
(Laughter)
Consider a motion to appoint Jean Mickelson as regular member, and Deputy Mayor Casal as Board of Trustee member, Mr. Stephen Hunter as Planning Board member, and Mr. Dan Posen as Attorney for the Village Member of the Conservation Advisory Board, each for a term of three years. Is there a motion? Trustee Taylor, second. Trustee Nell, all in favor? That passes. Consider a motion to appoint Paula McCarthy as Chair, and Rishi Gupta, Anna Maria Canaritche, Gil Singleton, Dale Utterman, Dana Greco, Felicia Rivera, Ravi Wadera... I have to get used to saying all these names. Regular members of the Nominating Committee, each for a term of one year. Is there a motion? Trustee Nell, second. Trustee Taylor, all in favor? Consider a motion to appoint Joseph Lucchese as Chairman, and Jill Hartnett and Carol Kearns as regular members of the Parks and Recreation Commission, each for a term of five years. Is there a motion? Deputy Mayor Casal, second. Trustee Nell, all in favor? That passes. Consider a motion to appoint Stephen Hunter as Chairman, and Stephen Brosnahan as a regular member of the Planning Board, each for a term of five years, and Peter Winder as the first alternate member for a term of one year. Donna Casal...
(Laughter) You're doing... Hang in there.
So far, so good. Deputy Mayor Casal, second, by trustee Taylor, all in favor? Thank you. If you have three more years of... Actually, five more years. So, thank you. Look forward to it.
And Peter's new, right?
Yeah, yes. Yeah, he's new.
Peter?
Peter Winder is new.
Right, so he's...
Is Peter here?
I can't hear him.
No. Peter Winder is going to be the first alternate.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Okay. So, that's good. No. Consider a motion to appoint Rob Barron as Chairman of the Traffic Committee, Clay Kaminsky, Larry Murphy as regular members, police officers Joseph Palladino and Richard Zakovich as Police Department Liaisons, Deputy Mayor Donna Casal, Public Safety Committee of the Board of Trustees, ex officio, Manuel Guevara, Police Chief of Police, ex officio, and Ed Maron, Fire Chief, ex officio, each for a term of one year. Is there a motion? Trustee Nell, second. Trustee Taylor, all in favor? That passes. Consider a motion to appoint Joe Cox as a regular member of the Youth Services Council for a term of three years, and trustee Marla DeRozzi, Village Trustee, ex officio, Police Sergeant Justin Kamke, Youth Officer, ex officio, and Kendra Garrison, Superintendent of Recreation, ex officio, as members of the Youth Service Council, each for a term of one year. Is there a motion? Trustee Nell, second. Deputy Mayor Casal, all in favor? Consider a motion to appoint Jeremy Gutman, John Moss, Paul Monte as regular members of the Zoning Board of Appeals for a term of three years, and Joe Capasso as the first alternate member of the Zoning Board of Appeals for a term of one year. Is there a motion? Trustee Taylor, is there a second? Trustee Nell, all in favor? That passes. I'm going to announce the ad hoc committee appointments. The ad hoc committee appointments are as follows. ADA Compliance Committee, Jerry McElvein as Fire Chief, ex officio, and Deputy Mayor Casal as Village Trustee member. Affordable Housing Task Force, Tracy Barron as Chair, Rob Lane as a regular member. Beautification Committee, Madeline Byrne as a regular member. Budget Committee, Renato DeRusso as Chairman, and Paul Stern, Stephen Centrillo, and Bill Kelly as regular members. Trustee DeRozzi, welcome.
Thank you.
And the judge is still here, so the judge can swear you in. So, let's go back to that item and have the judge swear you in. So, why don't you go down to the podium?
Thank you. Sorry for the delay.
It's okay.
It's crazy.
(Inaudible)
Wow! Well, I'm not even...
Yes.
Still here.
(Inaudible)
Do you raise your right hand? Do you, Marla DeRozzi, do you solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, to carry out the duties of trustee of the Village of Dobbs Ferry to the best of your ability?
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
You're welcome.
Ma, would you like to say a few words?
Ah, just really briefly, and my apologies again. Trustee and the rain did not help. I'm just a truly honored to have this opportunity again, and I want to thank everyone that put their trust again in me and voted for a second term. I'm looking forward to serving with this fine people and this incredible staff that we have. So, this is a team effort, and we not only need the support of the people sitting here, we also need the support of all the residents, so I encourage everybody to please get involved and help us to run the village and make it the beautiful place that we want all of us to be, that we all wanted it to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Ma.
Thank you.
I think I was at time of 29. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. The Dobbs Ferry Tree Consortium. That was not me.
It was me. (Inaudible) It was me. (Inaudible) It's on TV. I can't...
The Dobbs Ferry Tree Consortium, Kathy Dean as Chair, Nancy Delmerico, Neil de Pasquale, Nina Orville, Susan DeGeorge, Jean Ciccolini, Marie McKella, Madeline Byrne, Helena Colenda, Joe Lucchese, Kendra Garrison, Lenore Person, Erna... Kapatin...
Captenopolis.
Captenopolis. I'll leave it at... (Inaudible) 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 Raven David, Rosanna Giuliano, Matt Kay, Jacqueline Lee, Becca Litt... God bless you. Michael Petronacci, Lindsey Rothman, and Michael Smith as regular members.
Thanks, Vinnie, for being here.
Oh, Vinnie's here. Oh, thank you. The Facilities Committee, Mayor Rosillo as Chair and trustee liaison, trustee Nicole Sullivan as Vice Chair and alternate trustee liaison, Village Administrator Charlene Delacato, Building Inspector Ed Manley, Parks and Recreation Commission Chairman Joe Lucchese, Senior Advocate Abby Canet, Senior Advisory Committee Member Kathy Kay, American Legion Post 1048 Commander Bill Florin, Zoning Board of Appeals Member Paul Monte, and Village Resident Joy Haber as regular members. Congratulations, Joy, you're on the Facilities Committee. Ferry Fester Committee, Village Administrator Charlene Delacato, Chief of Police Manuel Guevara, Superintendent of Recreation Kendra Garrison, DPW General Foreman Stephen Trezor, and Village Residents Joe Rooney and Patty Stein Schneider. Sorry. (Laughter) Everybody's so tongue-tied, so I'm sorry. Historic District Task Force, Sonya Turgianian as Chair, Peggy Blizzard, Scott Rosasco, Greg Thomas, Madeline Byrne as regular members, and Dwight Douglas as Village Planning Consultant. Stephen Hunter as Planning Board Representative, Ed Manley as Building Department Representative, and Mike Patino as AHRB Representative. Mayor's Advisory Council, Mayor Vincent Rosillo as Chair, former mayors Joseph Bova, Hartley Canet, Don Mara, Bob McLaughlin, and Brian Monahan, and Scott Skuskin as regular members. Senior Advocacy Committee, Abby Canet as Chair, and Recreation Superintendent Kendra Garrison, Sid Udine, Catherine Kay, Roz Navarro, and Molly Rodriguez as regular members. Sustainability Task Force, Alyssa Fassman as Chair, Anila Sherian as Vice Chair, Denise Wooden as Secretary, Rob Barron, Kathy Bobenhausen, Kathy Dean, Susan DeGeorge, Ron DeRusso, Jen Murphy, Nina Orville, Patty Stein Schneider, and Lisa Stutz as regular members.
Linda.
Linda.
(Inaudible)
I thought I was almost done.
(Inaudible) (Inaudible) I think you're doing great.
Maybe next time, we could have, like, the village clerk read the names.
(Laughter)
Mayor Rosillo to announce the following trustee liaison... The 2019-2020 trustee liaison assignments are as follows. Affordable Housing, Deputy Mayor Casal and trustee DeRozzi. Ambulance Corps, Mayor Rosillo. AHRB... How did that happen, that Mayor Rosillo got that one?
Surprise!
That one's got to... We'll talk about that one later. Beautification Committee, trustee DeRozzi. Board of Education, Mayor Rosillo. Budget Committee, trustee Taylor. Chamber of Commerce, trustee Nell. Children's Village, trustee Sullivan. Conservation Advisory Board, deputy mayor Casal. Dobbs Ferry Tree Consortium, deputy mayor Casal. Downtown Committee, trustee Nell. Ethics Board, Mayor Rosillo. Facilities Committee, Mayor Rosillo and trustee Sullivan as alternate. Ferry Fester Committee, trustee Nell. Fire Department, Mayor Rosillo. Historic District Task Force, trustee Sullivan. Historic Hudson River Towns, all. Housing Board of Appeals, trustee DeRozzi. Library Board, trustee Sullivan. Nominating Committee, trustee Nell. Recreation, trustee Sullivan. Planning Board, deputy mayor Casal. Police Department, Mayor Rosillo. River Arts, trustee Nell. Senior Advocate, deputy mayor Casal. Sustainability Task Force, trustee Taylor. Traffic Committee, deputy mayor Casal. Tree Commission... (Inaudible)
Maybe to give you a chance to catch your breath, this is a very succinct list of primarily volunteer committees that do an enormous amount for the village, and many of you in the room are participants, but for anyone who's watching and sees this, there are numerous opportunities to get involved, for residents to help in areas that they're interested in, become more involved in helping the village in a way that really is invaluable to helping the village run. And anyone who...
(Inaudible)
So, says the chair of our nominator, the liaison to our nominating committee.
There's an app you can fill out, Liz will point you in the right direction, and then I'll make sure to tell you more about all of the committees you can decide from.
Thank you for that. I had to catch my breath. Thank you. Mayor Rosillo to announce the village, JP Morgan Chase, Tompkins Pack Bank, and Wells Fargo.
Mayor.
Yes.
We also... As a depository...
Wells Fargo and Webster Bank. Mayor Rosillo to announce that the official newspaper is... (Inaudible) enterprise does not publish, is the Journal News. Mayor Rosillo to announce the village... To announce village information is available on the internet at www.com, 25, and Verizon Channel 46. The official records of the Board of Trustees will continue to be the minutes of the Board of Trustees. The regular meetings of the Board are on the second and fourth Tuesdays of each month at 6:30 PM, with the exception of July... Traditional budget-related public hearings, public meetings are to be scheduled at a future I'd like to take a motion to adopt a resolution establishing a reimbursement to village officers and employees who use their personal automobiles while performing their official duties on behalf of the village at the annually-approved IRS rate. Is there a motion? Trustee Taylor, is there a second? Trustee DeRozzi, all in favor? That passes.
Something we do every year.
Yes. It is. I think we do all of this every year.
Just checking. Just checking.
I'd like to consider a motion to adopt the investment and procurement policies for the Village of Dobbs Ferry as recommended by the State of New York. Is there a motion? Trustee DeRozzi. Yes.
I'm in.
Is there a second? Trustee Nell, all in favor?
It's getting in my mind or something.
I'd like to consider a motion to adopt the master fee schedule. Is there a motion? Trustee DeRozzi, you have to make up for the first 38.
Yes.
Is there a second? Deputy Mayor Casal, all in favor? And that passes.
And then, we're also going to relook at that at some point soon, right? What the master fee schedule is.
Yes.
But just to... Should we explain?
Yes.
Just take a moment to explain what that is and how it works?
Right.
Sure.
Why don't Laura Lee... Why doesn't Laura Lee explain that?
I thought trustee Taylor was volunteering. We recently passed a local law, as you recall, taking the master fee schedule out of your local code and providing the opportunity for board discussion through the years for any revisions to be passed by a majority vote of the board. So, if moving forward in the year, you find one of the fees are not appropriate, either two or less than it needs to be, and most of these fees are adopted, which reflect the cost of actually processing applications and processing particular forms. So, you will have that opportunity to revisit that during the budget process, and if you need to make changes, you can revise that on an agenda at a public meeting with an affirmative vote of the board.
Thank you. So, that concludes the reorganization portion of our meeting.
And your public hearing was noticed for 7:30.
Right, so we have to wait for that.
So, you'll have to just do that, as they say in the court, on second call.
But I can go to other items for the regular meeting, right?
Sure.
So, do I need a motion to open the regular meeting, or...
No, you did open it in the beginning.
I don't think so, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So, since we're at the regular meeting portion, why don't we go to courtesy of the floor? Does anybody here have any comments or anything they'd like to say? If so, please limit your comments to three minutes.
Well, that's a first. That's a first. All right. Happy New Year.
Wow. Okay.
Yeah, say something.
(Inaudible) I'd like for you to come up and say something.
Yeah, welcome. That's okay.
Well, just congratulate.
Okay, I'd like to take a motion to approve audits number one and two for December 2019, and audits number one and two for January 2020, as recommended by the Village Treasurer. Is there a motion? Trustee Taylor, second. Trustee DeRozzi, all in favor? That passes. I know on the agenda, we have an item here concerning 23-manner play...
(Inaudible) More information from them on that. We need to get a title search done. Yeah, this was placed... It was coming back from the Planning Board, and the Planning Board is... Consider some implications. There's a paper involved, so be super careful that you have the proper rights, if needs be, for a transaction to occur. So, this will need to be adjourned, and it will be on the agenda when it has been completed at the Planning Board level.
I'd like to authorize the Village Administrator to sign the New York State Department of Transportation 2019 through 2024 Municipal Snow and Ice Agreement. Charlene, can you please shed some light on that?
Yes, we do that every year because the state... (Inaudible) Street State Streets. However, I don't think we're using it this year. (Inaudible) It's 60 degrees. In January. Right. But it's great, and in fact, towards the end, they sometimes give us a bonus. We do this periodically. Sometimes they give us some more money because they allocate a certain amount, and then they decide we're going to allocate some more, but this is a standard one. And this agreement lasts till 2024? Yep.
Okay, do I have a motion to authorize the Village Administrator to sign this? Trustee Taylor, second. Trustee DeRozzi, all in favor? All in favor? That passes. Consider a motion to authorize the Village Administrator to enter into a water usage, data sharing, and security agreement with SUEZ. So, again, Charlene, can you explain this to all of us?
Sure. The SUEZ agreement is basically to get some data as to what waters are used. We could use that. A number of villages are banding together to sort of study what the usage is, what the flow is for the sewers, in contemplation of doing some studies as to the cost...
the flow is for the sewers in contemplation of doing some studies as to the cost of the sewer repairs. So in order to do that, there was a state, a piece of state legislation that was sent up by- that people like are clamoring to get water usage. But in case they are, we have signed a nondisclosure agreement. In order to get the information to study. So it's us, Ardsley, Hastings, Dobbs Ferry, Tuckahoe, and a few others. And everybody's passing it before this month.
It'll be interesting to know how much water flows through probably different parts of the village.
Okay, is there a motion for that, please? Trustee Nell, second trustee Durazi, all in favor? And that passes. I'd like to also consider a motion to adopt a resolution regarding antisemitism. I know, Charlene, you've been involved in this, so can you please explain that as well?
The county made us aware of a number of villages and asked whether we would join passing a resolution to board stating our beliefs that- that happen and declaring that anti- is not allowed here, basically. And when I mentioned it to the board, we- as an alternate, has a resolution that funding the- ask that resolution in the- here in the board that we would pass something to state our feelings.
Right, and I do have it, which I will read into the record. But I just also want to state that once the attack happened in Muncie, I did reach out to the chief of police who had- the synagogues and temples in Dobbs Ferry to reassure them that- protected. And I think they reached, I think he'd reached out to see what more they can do to offer protection in a sense of- we have been in contact with the voters and we will continue to follow up and- read the resolution as follows. Resolution of the Village of Dobbs Ferry, Board of Trustees, against antisemitism. We, the- New York, are resolved on this day, January 14th, 2020, to stand in solidarity with the people of Muncie, New York, and reject bigotry, hatred, antisemitism, or discrimination of any kind. We are resolved to root out and fight any proliferation of hate in our village and to partner with neighboring towns, villages, and communities everywhere across our great nation to fight hate and ensure all people are free to practice their faith and pursue the American dream in peace. We are appalled by the antisemitic attack on our neighbors and are resolved that hate will have no home in our community or in any community in the United States of America. Our nation was founded on the principles of religious freedom and the right of all people to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Our village will make every effort to ensure that our community is one where- we are respect and support one another as a community. We welcome and encourage other communities to join this resolution forces in ensuring that the vile history of antisemitism here and around the world ends now here. Neighboring community never happens anywhere ever again. So do I have a motion to put that into the resolution? Second deputy mayor, all in favor? I do want to add, and tell me what we're adding to the agenda. I can't find it.
Committee, we do have a member of the code committee here. And this was made by your code enforcement officer, Ed Manley, to add a simple section in your housing standards code chapter, calling for minimum standards for the installation of window-installed air- fellow officers or for the safety of people and pedestrians and property below these units, which are often haphazardly placed in windows. This would require up to the manufacturer's requirements and instructions and also would provide an opportunity for the- actually, insofar as to draft proposed law. And I asked the mayor if he would entertain a motion to add an item of new business to your agenda this evening to call for that public hearing. And if you would like to do that, I can-
But this is just a public hearing. We're not voting or anything.
Oh, no, no. Yeah, the local law has to be. It's not you zoning code to- in order to expedite this on behalf of Mr. Manley, the code committee felt it was in the best interest of the village. Because oftentimes residents will leave their air conditioners in over the winter and they're subject to buffering in weather. And this way, the- enforced and we can provide notice to the public that you'll start to enforce those and then-
And you can correct me if I'm wrong. I need a motion to amend the agenda?
Sure.
So can I have a motion to gen, can I have a motion to amend the agenda to include-
To add an item of-
Trustee second, trustee, uh-
Mayor Casal.
All in favor? That item is added to the agenda.
I'll read the resolution and then you can ask for a mo-
Yes.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Dobbs- and that we're adding it to the next agenda. So it will be on the January 28th, 2020, in the boardroom at Village Hall, 112 Street, Dobbs Ferry, at 7:30 PM or as soon thereafter as the matter may be heard to hear public action of the- and be it further resolved that the above referenced introductory local law shall be deferred, circulated, and made- warnings with applicable law.
Is there a motion to schedule such a public hearing? Is there? Second trustee Nell, all in favor? Passes, so that will be scheduled for the next hearing, next public hearing, which will be the next meeting on January 28th, 2020.
And I'll get a public notice and a copy of the law to your clerk so she can provide that for public hearing.
So we're ready to do the swearing of the new police officer, right? Is Stephen Foley? Why don't you stand by the podium? I've been a mayor for about a month. I was sworn in about an hour ago, so you and I have been sworn in the same day, so it should be momentous for both of us, okay? So raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York to carry out the duties of a police officer of the Village of Dobbs Ferry to the best of your ability?
I do.
Congratulations. I am powerful at this, so here I do.
So my name's Stephen Foley. This is my mother, Angela Foley, my father, Stephen Foley, and my sister, Shannon Foley.
Foley, open up yourself. Where are you from?
I'm from Yorktown, 21 years old. I just graduated from the University of Scranton in December with a bachelor's degree in physics chemistry. And I've been wanting to be a police officer for a few, quite a few years now. I'm so happy that it's finally come.
Mayor and board, once again, I just want to thank you very much for all your support in the hiring process. We are once again backed up to our full complement of 27 police officers. And Stephen is attending, if you wish, his county police academy. He's at anticipated graduation date early May, at which point we're going to get him into field training on the road. At that point, we will also look to bring our traffic unit back up to full staffing as we have him down. We had a lot of interviews with Steve and one of the things that I liked about Steve, and it's just it's an intangible, it was just something that struck me very early on, was that he had actually deferred while he was on the waiting list with the score that he had attained on the civil service exam. He went up deferring and, you know, his reasoning was that he wanted to finish college and that he felt that that was very important. And, you know, in the time- I just, I liked that kind of initiative. He was able, you know, the education first before the job and wound up- to wait early. And he is set to walk with his graduation last in May.
Yes, sir.
So like I said, sometimes you come across these little intangibles that you got to go and forgot, and that's what I felt of Steve. And we're glad to have him on board here, and so we are very excited. We're looking forward to beginning your career.
Thank you.
Seriously.
Nice meeting you. Congratulations.
Mayor, can I- clarification on the resolution we just passed to set a public hearing? In the past, we've been setting those at 7:30. The board would prefer to put them at the meeting and wait in a gap. Soon thereafter, as the matter can be heard.
Okay, let's do that. Let's make it 6:30 and-
Resolution to adjust to-
trustee Durazi. That just leaves- two minutes in our, did everyone have a chance to look? I think we did have the minutes. And I think we have enough people here. Move that because it's time to pull there eventually, so. Does anybody have any questions or comments about the minutes? Okay. Heard any comments or problems with the minutes? I take a motion to adopt the minutes. Is there a motion for that? Trustee Nell, second deputy mayor Casal, all in favor? Minutes are passed and made part of the record. So the only item left is the public hearing regarding-
Can you do reports?
Oh, yeah, let's do reports. Okay. Okay, trustee Nell, I hope you have a lot of reports.
And then Dr. Rosie wants to go first.
Okay, trustee Durazi, do you have anything?
I just want to say thank you to the U Services Council for the holiday hustle during the holidays. It was quite- being the people responsible for their skating rink that we are going to have. So thank you for them to constantly keep involved and keep- that they are learning about all the ways of spending their time. And thank you to Barry and the rest of the team for all their work. W, amazing job with the holiday decorations. It has to be said, I got great feedback from everyone. The tree from all of the extra lights on City don't make look amazing, so thank you so much, guys. You did a fantastic job. Thank you.
And I really like the new little banners that were up. Did you see them on the street?
That was Stephen and Jen's idea, so thank you, Jen.
Thanks for making something I didn't have to design to.
I just said yes when I saw them. It's like, sure.
Trustee Taylor, do you have anything?
Just one quick note, there are several ongoing programs with the Sustainability Task Force, including the heat pump initiative and the kitchen waste. The task force has had its first meeting of the year and is prioritizing things, so we can expect, I think, a lot more in 2020.
Thank you. Are you ready now, trustee Nell?
Sure. The River Towns- go check it out. Designed by 744 Creative. Wednesday, January 29th at 6:30. More people, like we said earlier. And we're trying to- calling out which committees have vacancies so that we can- ideas are welcome on that. Else. I went to the zoning- at the zoning board.
Donna?
Yeah, just the senior programs. Abby and the Recreation Committee have come up with some really terrific new programs this new year. They're moving new trips, movies. And if you want further information, 914-231-8529. And exciting stuff coming up. The Valentine's Day party will be on the 14th, the next Monday. But they have movie Mondays and there's a, always has a terrific turn. They're doing a great job down there.
Okay, we have a few minutes. Maybe Charlene, can you talk a little bit about the status of the embassy?
The remediation and the remediation after it has been looked at by the environmental specialists is not on us, it's on them. So we're not, that's not causing, causing the extra. It's just the time. Now we have the roof that's been sealed, we have the windows. Most have the warranty for. Optimum is sometimes a problem getting them coordinated, and we need that for the generator for the heat. They're scheduled, after talking to a vice president, they're scheduled for Thursday. So we're going to have heat before the cove. And then it will be a matter of just doing the interior and finishing off. So we have it under control now, but it has been. I've had consultants.
Okay, that's great. Do you have, not to put you on the spot again, but do you have any kind of timeframe when we can.
I will. I will have a more definitive statement, and I don't want to, you know, because I.
I wouldn't want you to either, but I just wanted to throw that out there to you.
Again, Mayor, if you want to talk about the CDBG.
Yes, why don't you do that?
That's true.
No, I think, I want you to do that.
She's losing her voice. We applied for CDBG monies, and of course, we asked for a lot. We did get a little bit. We got a matching fund of a hundred thousand for the Gould Park Playground. And we have, of course, it's matching, we have a hundred thousand in the, we had for that playground, but now it will be a lot better. Also, we have a commitment by a group of parents whose kids play in the playground, it's a playground committee, and they have stated that they would raise the other fifty thousand. I don't know what's happening. It's the Embassy Center. So that's.
That's great news. Thank you very much for that.
Is there any, since we mentioned that there's a group fundraising, is there any way we can put information out for people out there who would like to contribute to?
I don't know where. I think on the Rec Department page, maybe some indication of where to give.
And the kids will really enjoy it, so looking forward to that. We have just a few more minutes before we have.
Can we do one thing? They, Charlene and TPW has been working on cleaning up the wires and meeting with people. And went around with them to point out some spots, and then you went around with some other people, and there's just things in motion to try and.
I think, and Jen up there can. That has the extra wires. What we're in the process of doing now is taking pictures of all of them. I think we have a commitment from Optimum to take those wires. You know, then the proverbial question is, when? We are committed to do this sometime in the future. So now it's just a matter of trying to get them.
And they're squeaky wheel.
Yes, yes, and we have been so far, and we will be squeakier W day. That also. The antenna that we have been pushing for with Verizon, I text them, I email them every status, status, and I'm waiting.
That's for Verizon to have an antenna so that we have better coverage, because the coverage of Verizon is so bad.
Yeah, CV downtown.
They agreed to put that tower in, or is it just?
They have a location that they're looking at. It's a matter of safety. I mean, the chief and I worked with it. It's a matter of safety for, public safety for the students and. Because there's no, there's no service. You can't call the police, or they can't call our headquarters.
Unless people have cell phones, so as their main source of communication, so it would be important to have full proper coverage of the whole village.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
We need it.
Okay, so it is seven-thirty, and it is time to have the public hearing, considering the application of one-fifteen Broadway slash St. Cabrini to add a new parking lot. Can I have a motion to open that public hearing, please? Trustee Now, Second, trustee Taylor, all in favor? That public hearing is now open, and can you please tell us who will be heard regarding this motion?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. My name is Tony Joffrey, a member of Walton County, in favor. Forty-five Hamilton Avenue, White Plains, here on behalf of the applicant Cabrini of Rochester. Here also in support of the application is Rob Perigee, an engineer for the project for private design engineering, as well as Pat Krasnaski and Carmen Giuliano of Cabrini. This application involves property located in one-fifteen Broadway. Premises classified and educational institutional zoning district consists of approximately eleven point seven acres. Where before your board in connection with a site commander pulls to add twenty-five additional parking spaces to meet the existing deep parking demand on the site. This represents a twelve percent minimus increase of parking on the site. We're submitting this application. Cabrini conducted. People. Which include vehicles illegally parked on the site, impacting traffic, pedestrian, safe and emergency vehicle access. Cabrini has already coordinated with Washington County Rideshare for park pooling on the site, no alternatives like biking. It's important to note the nature of the services provided by Cabrini, and the successful parking for people, staff, visitors, its services is patently clear. It's just not about parking on the site. Civic nursing home, location and access to parking go hand in hand. The record, when the submissions identify who, the number of alternatives that have been analyzed, with parking on the site, with shared parking, the need for parking along Broadway. The plan has been modified, and has been changed to address comments from the planning board, and importantly, to preserve trees on the site and limiting any potential visual impacts. Respectfully submit that the provision of twenty-five Wall Street parking spaces at Cabrini's site is necessary to allow safe, efficient traffic and pedestrian circulation on site, as well as maintaining adequate vertical legal access. That's at this time of disparaging. I'm going to give you a brief description of what the plan is. As you know, Cabrini of Rochester, from St. Broadway, and where we're proposing the parking is in the southeast part of the park. That corner is basically right now just a lawn with several. The total, so to describe the project in total. We've taken, there's four parking spaces, and this four parking spaces. This project that are underneath the inspector and the. System. So those spaces are not currently being used and cannot be used unless they're reconfigured. So what we are doing. Under the building, and we are reconfiguring four parking spaces parallel to the building that would be perfectly fine here with requiring. Additionally, we recognize that we. Handicap accessible parking spaces in this area since the employee entrance is at the location we cleaned up here in the background page that showed that employee entrance. Employee entrance uses this location here, so accessible parking, that accessible parking space would be available for. Well, we have. Sorry. This computer. We have to place an emergency service connection to the St. First property on the south property line. This is strictly for emergency purposes only, emergency vehicles. The reason for this is both facilities only have one access point on the front off of Broadway. So this will allow. Access in the event of any emergency on either property, whether they come in from a secondary location, they may. It will also allow for, in the event of a closure of one of these driveways for, let's say, an accident, that this, these could be used for knee rest or end rest to the property in either case. Again, it would only be used if gated, and only be used for emergency purposes. Going to the primary area of concern over here, which is the twenty-five parking space parking lot. We've reconfigured the parking slightly by taking it and rotating it to the north somewhat because there is a row of trees along the property line that's treated with express concern. We agree that those trees aren't worth saving, so we saved as many as we could. We originally had, off of the rule of all but two, we're now saving five of them, and there are two at this location that, the only reason we're moving is because the parking would cut into the new structure and they compromised their health, and so that's why those two have to be removed. These circles here around the trees represent.
I can learn to understand you much better if I could get. I need your permission to help.
This is a new computer that we got for the, for the office, and I don't know anything about it, sorry.
So what we have done is we've drawn some circles around these trees that represent the drip line and the trees, which is the roots of basically, and that's why we've rotated our parking to preserve these trees. This tree here in particular is a.
Of trees that would be taken down?
Two trees. I believe they're white, either one. Trees that would be removed. And. I don't know if you want to see the Cabrini plan before we. Prepare our escape plan. And along the perimeter parking lot, we are. Want this. St. First. Over here, they're proposing another row of viburna. I think the DT is. They are proposing. Along this official screening. There's some existing. Trumps in this area. Out there, there's a little bit of a gap, and what they are doing with these viburna here is filling that gap to further from Broadway. And along Broadway itself, they're putting in a row of ilex. Granada, which is probably about a five foot or so. The common engineering had was that the original design here was for a row of gigantic shrubs that were. Because they were approximately twenty feet in width, or six feet in width, from the sidewalk on Broadway, looking to the suburb. Which brings me to the. To show that you shed. From, you can see here, we've shown shrubs and their ultimate height, constantly, again, shrubs vary the height in the hill as they want, but somebody standing on Broadway will be looking over the entire parking lot, since the parking lot has been depressed into this corner, and we, this area is naturally depressed from Broadway, what we've found is that it'll move before we can still, to which point obscuring the shade.
You indicated in the beginning that it was sort of like, the plot of land didn't seem that large. How, how big a plot of land are we talking about?
In this corner?
For the, the whole parking lot, the total area?
Hold on, I have to put my. I have to put that up, sorry. represent the drip line and the, uh, the trees, which is the roots on basically, and that's why we've rotated our apartment to preserve these trees. This tree here in particular is a fifty-inch orange, uh, flowers... And we wanted to save that one.
Of trees that would be taken down?
So, two trees, um, I believe they're white, either one... Trees, that would be the one.
Okay.
And, um, proposed... I don't know if you want to see the grading plan before we're landscaping. Prepare our escape plan. And along the perimeter parking lot, we are... Along this St. Chris first. Over here, they're proposing another row of, uh, Viburnum. I think the DT is... But they are proposing along this official screening. There's some existing, uh, shrubs in this area. Out there, there's a little bit of a gap, and what they are doing with these Viburnum here is filling that gap to further from Broadway. And along Broadway itself, they're putting in a row of Pilex Granada, which is probably about a five foot or so. The, uh, Connaught engineering had was that the original design here was for a row of gigantic, uh, shrubs that were... Because they were approximately twenty feet in the experience type distance from the sidewalk on Broadway, looking to, uh, some river. Which brings me to the, uh... To fill it, to shed, from, as you can see here, we've shown shrubs and their ultimate height, constantly, again, shrubs very high in the hill as they want, but somebody standing on Broadway will be looking over the entire parking lot, since the parking lot has been depressed into this corner, and we, this area is naturally depressed from Broadway. What we've done is cut it down a little bit further, still, to which way obscuring the shade out of Broadway.
You indicated in the beginning that it was sort of like, um, the plot of land didn't seem that large. How, how big a plot of land are we talking about?
In this corner?
For the, the whole parking lot, the total area?
Of this, um... Hold on, I have to put my, uh, I have to put that up, sorry.
Okay.
I believe it's around a quarter of an acre, but I don't, I don't have that number probably directed.
Okay.
Do you have any questions? If you want to answer any questions, or if you wish to see me, wish us to go through those...
What I would like to hear, the alternatives.
Well, there was a lot of discussion of, at the plant, talk us through what some of those alternatives would be.
Certainly, I, it's, it's fun. So, we have investigated several alternatives. The plant board was looking in the area adjacent to the transformer, not transformer, excuse me, uh, generator, in the rear corner. We looked at that area and agreed to place ten parking spaces in this area, but you lose three, so it was only a net of seven. Right now, based on, uh, geographical data that was prepared, based on that area, there's a deep layer of unsuitable soil materials, which is bulge debris that the, uh, engineer has indicated to be removed to do any construction there. And all the fill material in this area would need to be a lightweight aggregate. That fill is quite expensive, um, and so what we did was we prepared this plan as an incentive for seven parking spaces, the grades in here, and we resulted in a retaining wall of five and a half, three places. Why we didn't get any close to this slope is it's very steep, and we didn't want, we did not feel comfortable in creating any kind of issue. So, this alternative would result in approximately twenty-eight thousand dollars of exceptional cost. That's not the cost of just the cost of the construction, that's the exceptional, the extraordinary costs associated with the light but aggregate fill, the retaining wall, the, and the disposal, removal and disposal of unsuitable soil, per parking space, right? That cost is per parking space. Then looked at an area, two areas here on the side of the building, uh, there's one on this one. This is on the building that right now is just a lawn and landscaped area. Um, as we said previously, the, um, the code requires a fire protection system, co-compliant fire protection system, be installed under here to put any parking under. Thousand dollars to install. That doesn't include engineering or soft costs associated with the design of that facility. And that, for six parking spaces, a net of six parking spaces, that would result in an extraordinary cost per parking space of fifteen thousand dollars. I think, believe that, uh, Connaught engineering had suggested that, um, now this also is not really a net of six because you lose the parallel space that was here on the current design, so it actually would be net of only five. We looked at this area here as well, which is the, uh, green space adjacent to the building, uh, results in approximately five parking spaces. However, there's an existing electrical vault here, which is the primary service for this facility, and that is the transformer vault. Um, that transformer vault, according to Connaught Edison, cannot be, their rules and regulations do not allow to be placed in the driveway. We recommend sidewalk or grand landscape areas to place it in the driveway, and this information is in our report as well. They recommend... The rates, the special degrees that, that exert that cost to that vault at home. Area fees, doesn't include the fees for temporary service to this building in the interim while this transformer is being changed out. This is a... And the planning board goes the northeast, northeast corner. Now, one of the things I did factor into the extraordinary cost here was, this is an existing thirty-inch arm drain that serves the upper part of this portion of the village. The streets above this portion of the site are connected to this thirty-inch arm drain that drains down to the river. But the extraordinary costs associated with this design would be the earth removal in here and the perimeter here due to the steep, the existing, the slopes. We haven't taken into consideration any of the extraordinary cost, any rock removal. There is a rock out properly existing right at this location, so it is, there is potential there rocking in this area during expedition. The other reason why we felt this alternative was less than desirable is we're currently creating employee parking. This is what the goal is, to provide parking for employees so that they can use the employee entrance to the south side of the building. Placing parking here places it approximately twelve hundred feet from the employee entrance. That would also require, require, uh, bearing... The sidewalk, the sidewalks, when there are a number of them. You know, sidewalk, the area right now is a front and... Right now, there's no continuous sidewalk that goes from, that would go from this point to the employee... Those were the alternatives that we were requested to... Part of the record that we just sent here to the board.
Thank you. Does any of the board, any question?
Actually, the need for the park is you're not increasing your staff at all, correct? So this is to, this, from my understanding, this is to accommodate the staff that you already have, correct? Um, because I know during the planning board that a number of the members of the planning board went out to look at the site, and seen that the only time there was really congestion was during the shift period, which we understand why that happens. So, suggestion made about maybe a valet to handle that, because as you know, I mean, so my question is the actual need for this. I mean, you said you were doing the... Are you taking?
Uh, the, Cabrini has, um, submitted and conducted a survey of the, uh, all the staff, and fortunately, the staff members, as we had said in our letter, was that staff members were not particularly in favor of, uh, using public transportation for the most part. There was a few that currently do, that for the most part, people arrive at this facility via their own vehicles and very few carpooling. And the reason for that is this is a nursing facility and has, the staffing doesn't come from a local, uh, locally, they come from all parts of the area, New York, they come from Rockland, Connecticut, New York City, so they're traveling quite a distance, so carpooling potential or using mass managed transit potential is not as, as, uh, as available for them.
Have you thought about the valet issue? Because again, from my understanding, is it really just that two-hour period, two or three-hour period of time when there's...
We always design to the peak hour, as, as you know, from the traffic pretend, even from a trip. Even on a roadway or highway, we always design as engineers to the peak period. So, meaning that this is the peak period, we're designing for that peak period because of that turnover of tension. The highway during that twelve o'clock in the afternoon, you'll see there's barely any traffic on it, but you go there... You have to design for that peak period, isn't it?
How do you come up with the number of twenty-five spaces? The number twenty-five spaces?
We conducted a, over a period of two days, that parking study, uh, we, from, on a thirty-minute basis, we calculated, and well, actually didn't calculate, went out there and actually witnessed the number of parking spaces in a facility for every thirty minutes over a period to determine. As you noticed, it was, as Ms. Cassell pointed out, a peak period issue in the afternoon during the... By a, a... We also had aerial photographs taken during that period of both north and south parking. These aerial photographs, and every car circle in red here is parked, is not parked in it, parked, could go to the... There's parked environments where they're not supposed to be parked, and there, even though there are five, uh, here, there are still people parked, there's still one, uh, one car parked, cars actually parked illegally as a result. There's what? I'm sorry. Mr. Joffe is pointing out, there's a, there's a couple of cars parked in the, um, parked in the handicap accessible...
I wish that your presentation would have similarity to, quite honest, it's very difficult to identify what you are showing to us on the plans, um, so it's... The front of the building, um, and I know that you described a lot of different obstacles that, uh, from... That is still to me, it seems to be that there is other alternatives, as some of the recommendations that the, uh, planning board has given, that there are, um, alternative for this, uh, for this parking lot.
So, this entire part of parcel of the rear building, from the back, building back to the railroad, is all steep grades and is not suitable for construction due to the steepness of that parking. And as, uh, as indicated, uh, with Mr. Perjean, we specifically identified this location due to its location, uh, trying to preserve views from the street to the... But not the road from the sidewalk, uh, because of the lower elevation, we're able to provide a significant amount of additional landscaping to buffer and mitigate...
Any other questions from the board?
What other kind of projects, um, are being considered for construction, um, at Cabrini, if any? Like, in the future, should we be thinking about this as like a... Or is anything else coming down the pipeline, or is this, this is just to...
Yeah, there's, there's really nowhere to go, actually, to build out on the property. We've maxed out, um, the utilization of the space, but also the mortgage on the building is all spoken for. So, we've laid out ourselves to build, uh, within the building, where what we're planning to do would really be, um, repairs and replacement, what we've been...
And the usage of the building is going to stay the same, or is there anything, like...
There's no plan to change.
It's just to adapt to what's currently there? It's just, having the parking is just to accommodate what be happening at the space?
Absolutely, you know, I haven't known that here is that more employees have cars than maybe had eighteen years ago, and everyone has a car nowadays. And, um, we also have visitors who come in all constantly, so it creates a constant flow in now. And have generated more... And, um, because we have...
Do they call...
They carpool? Yeah, they call, they're all the same honest, or they, they carpool, definitely, they don't come in two to three. It's more visitors today, so that's, last year, we ran into a very, um, painful problem between employees and visitors, where employees were parking, um, in the north block with... Because some of... So that's what we looked into beginning this project, and we looked into spending...
Is anybody from the public that would like to, uh, speak about this project? Talk about the planning board, or should I ask Mr.?
Yeah, I do know that there are some committees that want to weigh in on this, but they can't make it today.
Yeah, we don't have...
Yes, Stephen Hunter, South Lawn Avenue, Chair of the Planning Board. It's, it's interesting, um, there are a number of institutions that we call as, as our neighbors, whether it's St. Chris, or Children's Village, or, or Cabrini. And I, I think in working with these, they, they realize that they, they have a, they owe back to the village to be the best neighbor that they can be, and we've had great success with Mercy in terms of the landscaping they've done when they've done projects. And I, I think it's, I think, uh, the planning board felt that it was too bad that an institution that's, that's, did a great job, I'm sure, in, in what they do, but would be doing something that would demean the, 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 that we all love. Grass is hard to come by along Broadway and in other areas of the, of the village, and so it, it's... They- Studies as you showed, I and other members of the planning board did 25 studies over different periods of time, and by far- Many empty parking places, there is just a period where there's an overlap of shifts, where, where parking becomes a problem. And it seemed to us, on the planning board majority, that that's something that could be overcome in other ways, other than taking out a big piece of grass in the, in the front of the building. If they could put something in the back, or on the side, it'd be fine. Doing it in the front of the building, along that nice protected script there that we have, seemed to us quite unnecessary, given the- Committee that has worked on these things, the traffic committee, and I know they've been in touch there, but it, it may take more than just a short experience there. I think it's something that could be worked on more with the staff. The new parking lot is permanent, and I think, I feel that our majority of the board felt that before, before that became necessary, if it ever became necessary, that Cabrini owed us a lot more effort to try to find a way to get around this really one or two hour period where they've got this influx of shifts that don't match what you could get. Somebody moving cars around or something, there seem to be other ways that could be approached to do that, other than this project, which is expensive and goes against the name of neighborhood that we would like to have in that area.
Thank you, Steve.
So you, Stephen? So you guys passed at three to two?
No.
Yeah.
Well, they did with the caveats, yeah.
With caveats, so it's, I mean, it's not really passed, it's passed if it's not in the front, right? Like, the, the resolution you sent to us is that we want it to not be in the front, we want it, we want it to be somewhere else. So it's like, not really passed, right? I mean, like, that's not really, that's actually saying, like, it's not passed, we want it to be somewhere else, but it's, but it was sent to us anyway. So I just wanted to, like, clarify that, that your statement is, want it to be in the front-
That while this might be zoning, it doesn't match our vision plan. Our- So those are three other issues that we need to look at. But I believe they have asked- Than just, and those are the caveats. Look at the alternatives, prove to us that no other way, it, you know, it's beyond the pale on cross-
Looked at it, and they can't do the others.
I believe, well, I believe that they want some further, they have the questions-
You have a really short period there where it becomes a crunch.
Guys talked about that, Cabrini, please?
Yes.
I think there's a misunderstanding about the aspect of moving cars around, and I could just try to clarify that. The south parking lot is where the employees park, starting the day shift, which starts at 6:30 p.m. We change- In addition- We have counted out how many can park there, where they can park, and I- For visitors as well, and that's an ongoing, the day shift, that is a huge problem. So we let the day shift park in the north lot, if they can get in there and they, the visitors- It's not that there are only two hours, the south lot is always during the day shift, overloaded illegally. Through this, we need the spots. We have indeed looked everywhere. We have already spent- And the 75 does not include returning, who we recently contracted with, that is not in this 75. It's a lot of money, and we have- Have child care issues, this is not business, a, an office situation that we're talking about. I read something today that there are, after, we can't, you know, not to park wherever I want to take the- Happening to do, go someplace else. So we're, we're in a place where we need to provide that. We did look into concierge parking, it would, it would be expensive, and I'm ongoing, year round basis, but it's not that just- With that- It's a heavy, it's not, it's not just that.
I really want to acknowledge all of the things that you have done, because I have seen the project from the very beginning. However, I hope that you can understand that our main concern is the quality of life of our residents. And I am a walker, and that is the area that I walk, and that the light of my walk is to pass in front of Cabrini and see that green area. And the liaison to the, and for me, is protecting the trees and the quality of life of the residents. And I can empathize from a business perspective with the challenges that you're facing, but I still feel that you should consider to look for the alternative and the recommendations. And I have, but for me personally, it's very difficult to just say yes, because as Mr. Hunter said, a parking lot is permanent, and that will really, really change the character of the village and the view of Cabrini from Broadway. It's a significant drastic change. It's just very difficult to, to look at it in any other way.
You cannot see it from Broadway, can you? When you go by, I can't see it.
Well, I see the green spot, it's one of my favorite areas in Cabrini.
Down there, you see it, but when you go by, walking by, running by, you look- Walkout is a deep-
Didn't we say that we wanted to take a walk over there and physically see the space? Didn't we talk about this?
I don't recall, but we certainly can do that.
I, I would have liked to see it physically and, and kind of, you know, experience it on a physical level, maybe, you know, like I said before, maybe the plans are not clear enough for us to have a, a good visual of what is really being proposed.
We certainly recommend that, and it is indicated when Ms. Pergi had the elevation view of, it demonstrated the elevation of Broadway, the sidewalk, the location of the fence, as well as the vocation and elevation of the park, which is going to be lowered. So when you do have that view, the parking level indicates- Here is dotted line, is, is a view shift, so the parking levels- The shrubbery here and the addition, which is going to grow to five to six feet, which will get, provide- Studies and the analysis that was put into reports that, that report, in terms of the engineering- For over a year now, it's a significant period of time for- Parking spaces. I think it's, it's- This is the only location that we, that we can look at- Additional confidence, as I've indicated, I've been on the board of the hospital for thirty- Nurses that are, they're trying to get skilled nurses- That entire landscape and serve- I think that coming to the, the lack of qualified and skilled nurses that are basically- Now, and understand concerns- We really, we really, this is the only feasible alternative for-
Can I ask a, a quick question, Mr. Gioppi? Mr. Pergi? Highlightsing those demand, and have, have you con-
Of course, be used within parking spaces and not within- I did confirm-
For 22 years, and was responsible for the major high location that was done- We had parking, very, very obvious parking. I read that was wrong. They cleared the Broadway, we made about 20 spots there, we made that- We also appreciated the value of having green space. Yeah, that was 2006, and building, so we probably started planning in 2000. So I just wanted to mention that it's not that we, we do care, but we don't-
Had us some of the, the chimney conversations with all the, with all the-
James and the village of- Taking- You get the 501, rideshare, a couple of other things. We're looking at the shuttle, coming up with some sort of a shared shuttle between all the- Institutions get together to help the village in reducing the amount of traffic that institutions are generating.
Yeah, so everything, spaces available at 99 seater, for instance, and if there's a shuttle going back and forth, then it's an option.
That's what I was just discussing with Torsten Taylor, which is across from my house, and they have a shuttle that goes back and forth, and that's how they are being able to-
Also done more than that, they've, they've introduced biking, they've introduced rideshare, they've introduced, you know, taking public transportation, so they've done a considerable amount in their-
And Mercy has less parking than Cabrini does on the premises.
I was in college, they had about five, now we have ten, or 10, in adding, Cabrini has implemented bike racks already in, in multiple locations. So we are attempting to, as much as possible, to get different people work there, to come up with different scenarios, get carpool, they're exploring all those avenues, just to show. And there's still, if you look at the overall length, the whole property at Cabrini, the overwhelming majority of Cabrini, along Broadway, there's already green space, so we're probably taking is maybe less than 10% away from the so-called green space. So if members, board members would like to take a walk, please keep in mind that it is a long stretch of property.
What we, the thing, that I, I maybe just haven't been able to dig it out of the report here, is there a, you talk about extraordinary costs, is there a comparison of the cost per space for, for the alternatives and, and your proposal? In other words, something that just lines them up to see it's X and then, you know-
We haven't done an actual cost analysis, total cost- Those costs, that would be, would be alternatives over the cost per-
I'm, I'm not an engineer, but it seems puzzling that you, if you, that you wouldn't know what the, and then, area above that-
In other words-
But there, there's some costs that are more complicated than, than just building a parking lot in what you're proposing too, right? So I-
This particular parking where we're proposing has, is, is more of a standard parking lot because there's minimal amount of grading, there's, there's not a major need for removal of trees, there's no, there's not a major need for construction of retaining walls to fill this parking lot. So what we've done, from this perspective, this parking lot is where we're proposing it, is the least costly of all the alternatives, since, like I said, the areas-
And, and George-
Cost, the, the total site furniture is across- The-
So, I mean, I understand what you're saying, it's not that I don't believe we get comfortable about the-
And this proposal, but I'm making another this too, your, your thoughts about being able to look over that area?
coming and making your plans, okay? Being no other further business, I will take.
Did you take a motion?
I will take a motion.
I made a motion.
To close the meeting. Trustee Nell, second Deputy Mayor Cassell. All in favor? And the meeting is closed. Thank you.